To bring forth the business like they need to. I thank your Lord for each one. I pray blessings over them, dear Lord. And I ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. You want to pledge?
Pledge and introduce to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Player one, we're going to record the schedule. It's going to be a foot meeting. April the 25th, only eight months to Christmas. For the record, office commissioners are here, county judges here. We do have a forum, also county officer, county clerk are here as well. I number one is to read and sign the minutes. I have one set of minutes here from April the 11th. You want to have any questions or comments about that set of minutes? Hearing none, can we have a motion in to approve that set of minutes? That's presented.
Question.
Either way. Flip the corner of the book. All in favor, say aye. Can you oppose, same sign, and that carries. They said they were trying to pick on James, and I wasn't there. They picked on me.
I sent pens, you picked up.
He dropped out of the plastic, that's what I mean.
You don't have to go pick out anything, Roddy picks it all out. Throws it in your bag. Two bags.
All right, I number two is discuss and consider accepting appointment of new county chairperson for the Eastland County Historical Commission, Julia Rodd. Judy, you get to actually be.
Oh my God, my folder at the house.
Just tell us what you've got.
Okay, um.
Yes, thank you.
Make sure the camera's on you right there. Come on up.
I don't know if we need to have, because I had a sheet all filled out to have y'all sign it, because I don't know if we need that approval or not. I looked in the bylaws and it just said that basically every two years we all approve.
We appoint, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll approve the appointment, that's why.
Right, as our people. And we really haven't made any changes in our people other than we lost Jeanie Pruitt, and she was the chair. So they all wanted me to be chair.
Hey.
Yay, so I.
You weren't that, you weren't at that meeting, right?
I'm still secretary. So anyway, but it moved to, we, and the only thing extra we did was we did not have a co-chair before, and Terry Simmons will now be our co-chair. He was already on the board. So that's the only changes that we've made. We're kind of waiting, I'm still, we have a few members that weren't there, but we had enough to do what we did. And then we're looking for maybe another secretary in the group and maybe bring all that as one to.
Okay, do we do the appointment at the end of this calendar year? Like somewhere in December or January?
January, because it's two, three, December 31st.
Make sure that happens.
Right, and I've got it, yeah, I've got it on my calendar. And then, uh, there's one other thing. Jeez, I just lost it. I guess that's it, I don't, I. I totally forgot about this.
All we need to do then is maybe just ratify or accept the, your appointment as your county.
As a, as a chair.
As chair, right.
Yeah, and Terry's co-chair.
As co-chair.
And other than that, nobody else has changed. Oh, I know what I was going to say. And we have members from, I've got one, I'm going to head up in Eastland. We are, we have, we had eight. We have actually seven members, but one of them is wanting to leave, and she's in Ranger, and she just doesn't have the time. She's always working. So, uh, so we're down to, uh, what did I just say, seven? And, so I make six, but we're not letting her loose till we find somebody else.
Okay.
But we, we're looking for a couple more members at least. And we've gotten good with Ranger, and I don't think anybody from the Cisco area. So if anybody knows anybody that likes history stuff, we've got one Rising Star, a couple of Eastlands and a couple of Rangers, and then the rest of the county is open for, you know, we'd like to have some representation from other parts of the county. So if anybody knows anybody.
You might approach John Wagner in Cisco. He was the curator of the museum in Cisco, the Conrad Hill Museum.
Okay.
Did a great job over the years. He's retired, he's fully retired now, but still very active and interested in Cisco history. He's a newcomer, he's been there about 30 years.
Like me.
John Wagner.
Okay, all right, and that is, so I guess, and I can bring, if we want that signed, if we need a signed sheet.
I don't think that we need it. The bylaws don't require it, we just have to keep appointing somebody every two years.
Right, it's just we're supposed to bring that slate.
Really put that under the calendar. I won't be here and make sure you can get on your calendar to have that happening in January.
I got it, all right.
So can we have a motion then to, I don't know, approve, ratify, acknowledge whatever word fits?
Recommend the recommendation?
Approve the recommendation of the Historic Commission to appoint Julia Rodd as the chairperson of the County Historic Commission and Terry Simmons as co-chair.
Then we're really stumbling along with this now, so, because Jeanie was the one. She had all the contacts and knew what needed to be done.
We have a motion second, we have a discussion. All in favor, say aye. Can you oppose, same sign. Yeah, we probably lost some history too when Jeanie left, because she was really history buff at Ranger earlier.
Yeah.
Doesn't press key and all that.
Probably a big box of paperwork on her ass.
Well Judy, I appreciate you taking over being, that's an important part of maintaining our history.
Yeah, we kind of started on our first problem that's made us about Gorman with the Highway 6, where their superintendent there was concerned that the drainage from that expansion was going to bother the walls and step over by the football field.
Oh, yeah.
And, but we've already kind of taken care of that. I would, we talked to tech, but the liaison between the Texas Historic Commission and TaxDOT, it sounds like they're saying that it's going to be better for it.
That's what they told us. We sold the little county yard that was down there to TaxDOT so we could widen it, put in a detention fund.
Yeah, oh, okay.
I hope that works. That's what, that's what they told us, it'll happen anyway.
Okay, well, that's good, that's good. So everybody's happy right now.
Okay, good deal.
Thank you.
And folks out there, that was Julia Rodd, she funded the county. All right. I number three, discuss, consider, pose pending contracts and agreements. I don't think I have any beyond anything that might be on the agenda. Anybody else have anything to bring to us? All right, no action on number three. I number four is discuss, consider certificates of completion for Public Information Act and Open Beans Act. Thank you, Lettie Harrington. This bestie, if she sometimes is wrong, has gotten her training done for everything. Now she's done for cybersecurity, which we approved or accepted last time, and she's got her Public Information Act, Open Beans Act done as well. And I will give you copies. So can we have a motion to accept those certificates of completion?
Motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose, same sign, and that carries. I number five is discuss, consider county auditor to file calendar year 2021 transactions ledger.
It is in this envelope, it's 3,061 pages. I'm giving it to Kathy on a flash drive. And if anybody would like it, I can tell you how to generate it out of NetData, or we will print it for you.
So this is for our first, this is for ARPA 1, right?
No, no, this is just, it's required in local government code 114 that I file this by the end of April.
This is for ARPA funds, though?
No.
This is ARPA funds.
On number five, you don't have anything. That, that's the only thing that goes with it.
All right, can we have a motion then to accept the filing of calendar year 2021 transactions ledger?
Motion.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Can you oppose, same sign. Ah, I see, motion to discuss, consider adopting a resolution to designate American Rescue Plan Act $10 million standard revenue loss allowance. Down, Ms. Key.
Um, yes, this is a resolution borrowed from Yiddick County and Commissioner's Court there, and several Commissioner's Courts are adopting a resolution to designate the revenue from, from the ARPA funds as, um, lost revenue. And under that provision, and Jill Penny will talk to you about it too, but under that provision, um, that money can be used for normal operating costs, which we have, Commissioner's Court has designated where they want the money to go. Um, but it just simplifies the expenditure and reporting.
Says it really simplifies and streamlines reporting and gives the county the broad flexibility to determine use of funds. All right, so we just need to adopt this resolution. Do you have any questions or comments about this resolution, about ARPA funds?
No.
Can we have a motion in to adopt this resolution? And I may second it.
I'll make a question.
Second. Motion made and seconded, and we have a discussion. All in favor, say aye. Can you oppose, same sign, and that carries. Would you give that, would you give that to her? Give her a copy of the file.
Could I get my?
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. You want another?
Yeah.
There we go.
Thank you.
All right. All right, number seven is discuss, consider, accepting or filing cybersecurity training certificates. I have one in here from Annie Maxwell. Anybody else have a certificate to add in today?
I do, I have certificates for myself, Tracy Parker, and Lisa Johnson.
All right.
So who all needs, do you need copying?
Yeah, and then it needs to go to file as well.
Yeah, I've got a copy for Loretta, a copy for Kathy, and a copy for you.
I don't need a copy.
You don't need a copy? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Captain Moss. Thank you.
All right, anyone else have cybersecurity training certificate to add in today? All right, hearing none, can we have a motion to accept these certificates just named for filing?
Motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose, same sign, and that carries.
Can I have Andrews, please?
I don't know about Andrew, it says Andrew on there. That takes us to I number eight, 911 update, property dispatch update. So, uh, I don't have anything on 911. Chief Deputy, anything on 911 issues that dispatch that we need to know about or property dispatch issues or?
No issues, everything, everything's still going, tower orders and still testing.
Okay, all right. Anyone else have anything to bring up for 911, addressing dispatch? Okay. And with that, there's nothing to be taken care of on that. I number nine is update on county burn ban. We did put on a new burn ban last week, so, our last meeting, so we didn't have any kind of a lapse. We still do have a burn ban. We've not had very much rain. About an inch at my house. All right, anybody have an idea of taking off the burn ban?
No.
No, all right. No action, burn ban remains on. I number 10 is personnel matters, Ms. Key.
Yes, you each have a report, the time period for the report is March 30th through April 12th. During that time period, there were no new hires and one employment termination, which was a full-time dispatcher.
Actually, here we hired a part-time during that time period that's never been able to go to work, because all this stuff hasn't been done.
This stuff came in this morning?
Did it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, they won't show till they actually go active in the system.
All right, anyone else have any issues to bring up for personnel report today?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would like to ask Ms. Loretta what we could do on the clothing allowance.
Could we discuss that under payables?
Yeah, anything.
Okay.
Yeah, we're very.
Okay.
All right, anyone else have anything to bring up on the personnel matters? Accept the personnel report as presented.
That's what I said. There you go.
Motion seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose, same sign. 11A is, uh, let's turn appropriate, appropriate to the matters or catch additional revenue, Ms. Key.
There are several. The first one is industrial supply. It was deposited into general fund credited to combined refunds reimbursements. Uh, this was a fiscal year 2021 reimbursement, and I am not asking for an expenditure increase. Next is $8.25 received from Microsoft. It was deposited in general fund credited to combined refunds reimbursements. Um, this was a sales tax refund, and I'm asking the court to increase the Treasurers Computer Supply Expenditure Line by the same $8.25. Then $986.50 received from Bad Drill bail bonds, deposited into general fund credited to reimbursed inmate transport. This was a fiscal year 2021 expenditure, and I am not asking for an expenditure line increase. After that is $383 received from Texas Department of Criminal Justice. It was deposited into general fund credited to reimburse inmate transport revenue line. This was also a fiscal year 2021 expenditure, and I'm not asking for an expenditure line increase. Then $783.79 received from Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Pool. It was deposited into general fund credited to insurance claim receipts. Uh, this was the holdback payment for the dispatch roofs that were recently replaced, and I'm asking Commissioner's Court to increase the dispatch building tower maintenance expenditure line by $783.79. And the last one is $14,931.60 received from the State Comptroller for Texas Juvenile Justice Division. It was deposited into the juvenile probation checking account and credited to regionalization grant R revenue. I'm asking the court to increase the juvenile probation external contracts expenditure line by $14,931.60.
If you have any questions or comments on these additional items of revenue? Hearing none, can we have a motion to certify the revenue and to allow the expenditures as not?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Can you oppose, same sign, and that carries. Get it all loose, thank you.
Yes, sir.
11B is emergency minutes.
No emergency minutes.
All right, 11C is amendment changes by fund.
There are amendment changes by fund. And there are two pages. The majority of these are adjustments within budgets. The certification of additional revenue from previous Commissioner's Court. And I do not see anything from contentious. Let's just move on to business.
All right, do you have any questions or comments on these amendment changes by fund? Hearing none, can we have a motion to make these amendment changes? Motion made and seconded, you figured it out?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose, same sign, and that carries. All right, that takes us to 11D, Report of Financial Commission.
Yes, you have two reports. The first report is for the month of October 2021. It is completely reconciled.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir. The first section of that report is the combined statement of cash position for October, use of general ledger balances as of the end of October, general fund checking, First Financial Bank CDs, $847,263. Texas Bank, one CD, $250,000. Shirts Bank, one CD, $250,000. Prosperity Bank, one CD, $250,000. Techful Prime, $521,229.59. Texas Class, $510,130.17. Total general ledger balance, all funds on deposit for general fund, Roden Bridge Checking, $424,357.97. There are really pages. There's more. And on the fourth page is the total for all funds on deposit for the county as of October 31st. Total pages. The next section is the combined statement of revenue and expense for October, and you'll see revenue and expense month to date and year to date by fund. Three pages. Then the combined statement of cash receipts and disbursements, and this also shows October beginning cash balance, cash receipts, cash disbursements, and ending cash balance. That is a general ledger balance as of October 31st. The management report from First Financial Bank follows. It's two pages. On the second page, there's a total pledged line and the pledged market value for all securities on the, covering our deposits, Prosperity Bank then also has the pledged security listing and the current market value of securities covering deposits there is $229,166.19. The next report is the interest, and the current column is your fiscal year 22, year to date, end of October, we had earned $698.15. Same time in fiscal year 2021, $1,866.39. It is coming back, and we're seeing it. Next is the lease payment schedule showing the four lease purchase agreements for Roden Bridge, three with First Financial, or First National Bank, and one with American National Bank. I have included copies of the investment report and the Treasurers report from previous meetings. That way we have a complete October report.
Hope y'all can hear that, that's a red point.
We're getting there.
All right, do you have any questions or comments about this financial report for the month of October 21? Can we have a motion in to accept that report as presented?
Motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Can you oppose, same sign, and that carries. All right, next up, we have a report for financial division with unreconciled balances as of April 21st.
Yes. General ledger balances as of April 21st, close of business. General fund checking, $4,079,838.26. Techful, $331,172.69. First Financial Bank CDs, $857,710. One Texas Bank CD, $250,000. One Shirts Bank CD, $250,000. One Prosperity Bank CD, $250,000. Techful Prime, $521,506.86. Texas Class, $510,486.26. Total general ledger balance, all funds on deposit for general fund, Roden Bridge Checking, $1,262.15. And if you'll come down to Fund 26, which is the ARPA funds, checking, $489,176.99. First Financial Bank CDs, $750,000. Texas Class, $500,427.79. General ledger balance of all ARPA funds on deposit, The remainder of the funds are listed. And then on page four is the total general ledger balance for all funds. And again, Funds 98 and 99. On page two of the bottom are clearing accounts. Those two accounts are not reconciled, and I have included the printout from First Financial Bank of all of our funds, so you have actual banking account numbers as of April 21st also. So you have actual banking account numbers as of April twenty first also. The next report is the combined statement of revenue and expense. And also as of April twenty first, showing month to date revenue and expense and year to date revenue and expense. And that is by fund. And the total is on the third page. The next report is the combined statement of cash receipts and dispersment, showing April beginning cash balance, cash receipts, cash dispersment, and April twenty first ending cash balance by fund and account type. There are six pages of that report. Then you'll see the printout from First Financial Bank of all of the accounts for the county. And the last page is the scheduled lease payment. And it's the same for lease purchase agreements for Roden Bridge.
All right, gentlemen, questions or comments on the second report, which is an unreconciled balances as of April twenty one? Do we have a motion to accept that report in as?
Second.
Made, seconded, all in favor say aye, opposed same sign, and?
Under that is American Recovery Plan Act funds, showing the three certificates of deposit and the Texas class account. And collateral on cash balances and nine certificates of deposit is adequate for the period. This report is made in accordance with the provisions of Government Code Two Two Five Six, the Public Funds Investment Act. The investments held in the Eastland County portfolio comply with the Public Funds Investment Act and the county's investment policies and strategies.
All right, gentlemen, questions or comments? Carry on, before we have a motion to accept the investment report as presented.
Motion.
Second. Made, seconded, all in favor say aye, opposed same sign, and that carries. All right, eleven F is financial reports or departmental reports. Kathy, I've got the financial report here, I don't know if you've got the copies of that or not.
I did not.
I'm gonna give you that whole packet. And then what else do you have with all three reports?
I have the DMV. The second to last page. Twenty twenty one, as of the end of March, county had collected part of the appraisal district, the next one collected ninety four point five eight percent of twenty twenty one taxes.
All right, gentlemen, questions or comments about these financial or departmental reports? Do we have a motion to accept those in as just now?
Second.
Made, seconded, all in favor say aye, opposed same sign, and that carries. Down to twelve, bills, plans, and accounts.
There are several sets, the first one is April fourteenth payroll, that is all payroll payables other than workers' comp and unemployment. Next is, it's also April fourteenth payroll gross wages. Then April twentieth, comp data payables to be paid today. And then the next is April twenty fifth payroll, with the regular payables for today. And then there are two for grants, one is April twenty sixth, that is the ARPA grant. That's the hospital at Oldham Volunteer Fire Department. And the last one is the general land office grant, and that's Eastland County Water Supply District. We have not received this three hundred fifty eight thousand eight hundred seventy five dollars yet. But if the court will approve it, Christina will hold the check, we only have three days to get it to Eastland.
That's one of the just trends originally about the amount of time we had to play them. Gentlemen, let me know when you're ready, questions, comments, and several sets of bills.
Is this where you want to come back?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, one of them was what asked, Mr. Ray, what would be the easiest thing to do? Because all the guys buying clothes and there's no guidance of what they can buy. And I just, it don't matter to me, I just, if we could go out and get it warm and put down whatever, you know, pants, shirts, whatever, whatever's easiest. We'll have a guidance on it.
When we started this, we were, everybody was doing uniforms, and we were having such trouble with the uniform pathways. It was decided to purchase work clothes through county precinct budgets. So when we started, it was Wrangler work jeans, which are running about thirty dollars right now, and work shirts, which also you can get them for under thirty dollars. What's coming through now is seventy five and up dollar, cinch jeans, belts, socks, jackets. We did start purchasing work boots because Commissioner Rains felt that if his employees were going to get out and walk in hot mix, that they needed work boots and the county should furnish them. I think that's a good use of public, seventy five hundred five dollar jeans. And I think that's a good use of public funds, if you give me directive to do that, I will sign off on it. Actually, I won't. These are jeans our taxpayers can't afford, and I have a problem with it.
Oh, I understand.
Now, we've bought jackets and stuff, but I'm telling you, I've come and go with this. I'll spray you down with oil and you strip down the side of the road.
And I understand.
Does it look better if it's an area out that's been sprayed with oil?
Well, it doesn't make no difference, you can't see nothing in black. But I mean, we've run everything down to a guy's skiddies and had them stripped down in the shop and spraying them down with a water hose. And they're white, bring them clothes to wear.
But they do make a line of work clothes, area out.
I can tell you this too, lady, and everybody agreed that right now clothes are hard to get, just like other things. But they ain't taking that for, you know, they can order them, and it's taking a while to get in. But back to, all I want is something on paper where I can say, here's what you can buy.
We just need to set some kind of a limit, you can spend this much money for pants, this much money for shirt.
It's hard to do that, though, it is, because you have to buy, sometimes you have to buy what they have. Because if you order it, you don't sometimes get it. Well, there's a problem in that, because we don't want to pay for it until we get it. And sometimes it's six, nine months from where they're getting their clothes. So sometimes you buy what you actually have on the shelf. And now, I don't, I mean, I don't know, we've always bought Wrangler. And one guy buys Levi's. But it's what they have on the shelf that fit when they want to get it.
A lot of stuff we need to put a brand on it, let's just put some kind of, what you can spend for it.
We do, they get a dollar amount, yeah.
Yeah, we get the dollar.
Yeah, I mean, you got X dollars to spend, you buy, this is your allowance, X dollars. You buy however many shirts or how many bridges and pair of boots.
Well, then when it puts up, it says work related clothes, work related clothes.
Not pay dues, work boots.
Well, I've got one that wears shoes, just like I do, tennis shoes, I don't know what they're called. They're not pay dues, but they, he wears tennis shoes because he, just like me, it's hard to find a forty boot that actually you can put on. You know, but they, they have a dollar amount as well as getting that. We always just let them decide if you want six shirts and three pair of jeans, or three, three pair of jeans and twelve shirts, whatever. This is your, this is your allowance that you get, and you've got to stay within that or below.
And if you go over, you pay for it.
You pay the difference, yeah.
Is that a monthly allowance?
No, it's twice a year, we buy clothes, uniforms twice a year.
But we are talking to work clothes?
Yeah. Well, I mean, my guys buy the same shirt, I mean, they all wear that light blue denim type shirt, but Bill's got one.
Hey, hey.
Who are the vendors? Uh, who are the vendors? Well, these are coming through Reers, I know you can get, you can get work clothes through Tractor Supply here locally.
Some have bought the Tractor Supply, some have bought Reers for us, I know. I know the jackets, one time they bought a Tractor Supply because they were cheaper and they'd get them.
That is one problem, though, is you can't get clothes like you could before the pandemic. Before, it wasn't a problem, you could keep them there, but now, y'all know it's hard to get clothes.
Well, we don't want, no, what we don't want to do, and that's go back to the uniform thing.
No.
We just went through that, I'm on the City and Rural Rights Board, and they were talking about uniforms and they're gonna charge this much money, even if you don't have any picked up for that day, they're gonna charge you forty bucks to come by the shop and see if you need to pick up anything.
Yeah.
So, and they don't bring them back, and so we decided to go with putting an allowance in there for them to go buy some clothes and keep up with themselves.
And that's an option too, instead of paying for it out of county, but going and charging it and paying for it? Do it as a taxable allowance?
It's tax, we tax them anyway.
Well, if it's jeans, if it's street clothes, yeah, well, yes, yeah, okay.
They're taxed, taxed anyway for it.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you could do that.
Just give them the money twice a year.
That's, I'm good with that, I'm good with that, that way we have.
And then they can buy whatever they want with that lump sum, last year.
Right.
They, they better not just buy two pair of jeans and hope that's gonna last for them, they better.
That's their problem.
That's their problem.
As long as they don't show up naked, I'm good.
They don't need to show up in here as a central area, as far as.
But at that point, it's their money.
Their decision.
They're responsible for buying their own work clothes.
I'm good with that, I'm good with that.
I like that, they went on to. Just, well, back into it, a lot of people, you know, I love them shirts, like James is got on, I wear them too. But there's a couple of guys, they won't wear shirts like that.
Well, and another thing is, is you're sitting there, you go order, and boots is what we have problems with, you go order a pair of boots, I don't know where you got your boots or not. They're bringing me a ticket, I'm filling out a ticket, and then I'm finding out, they never got the boots. They ordered them, but they never came in. And then I'm sitting there going, guys, you go, you can't just hand me something and mean no. You've got to tell me, I had ordered these this time, this don't pay for them just yet. Because I'm getting the invoices and I'm doing the POs and sending them through, I'm not ever knowing.
Well, you're also signing that you were sick.
Yeah.
If you just gave them a uniform allowance, then?
Then it's up on, it's on their deal, they can track it, yeah.
That'd be better.
Yeah.
I'm with this one. So how would you do it, just write it on like what you're saying, how would you do it?
We need to change it.
Well, we'll have to change policy, but my question is, what do I do with the Reers tickets right now?
And if you, I can write a check and just pay for it, and it'd be good if that's easier for you, whatever you want to do.
I would prefer you pay Reers and then let them tell us what we actually owe.
Just erase it.
What is our name?
I'll be honest, I budget two hundred, I think, for boots, for each of back in the loop.
And what, so is this gonna be all the same, I mean, everybody gonna get the same money or what?
Whatever's budgeted.
Yeah.
Yeah, like it just shows up on the budget as like, I'll get like twenty four hundred budgeted every year.
So how's that gonna work?
Well, and that's, it'll be divided.
Equally.
Equally, now you have part time hands that don't work five days a week, so they don't need five sets of clothes, so we'll have to work that out during budget. And we probably do it just like we do the HSA contribution, one in October and then one in April.
That's what we do now, I mean, it's usually one right after budget starts, then one, you know, springtime type deal, so they can buy short sleeves, long sleeves, if they want them, most of them are short, long sleeves are long, you run.
So mine, it'd be all right if I just moved that money that was in there into materials, is what I was gonna do.
But uniform many into materials?
So here forward, like the next round is, what month is it, Robert, usually?
It's usually this month or next month.
Yeah, because they just, yeah, we got, what's the one after this?
Won't get, mine don't get another one until October.
That's the same as those, so then October, we'll have it figured out, where they, you just give them a check or just add it to their check?
Um, it would be easiest to add it to one check, but sometimes because they're already getting a check, they'll get less because their income's higher and what told them it would be higher. So, um, daily it's gonna kill me. But we could do another check, like between payrolls.
That would work good, the best one, if it was in a garage, like you're saying.
Right.
That'd work pretty good, what do you think, Andy?
Well, it'd be, if you do it one check twice a year, it'll, that breakdown that you're having to do now to, for the uniforms, where you're, every month you're taking off a percentage, that, well, if we did, we don't do it that way anymore, we used to.
Well, but in payroll, every time it goes through, we have to change the payroll.
Yeah.
It, it would really be.
It'd simplify it.
Easier all the way to that.
So they'll get two extra checks if you're basically clothing lines. That sounds great to me, and I'll take your Reers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything further?
That's gonna start when, after budget?
Yes, because we've got to change policy and budget.
So like I still, we still gotta go get you.
That helps too, if you, you have a guy hired, you're working for six weeks, and you're just buying five hundred dollars worth of uniforms.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Can't take them back from you.
But they're taxed on it.
Yeah.
You know, pants.
One leg each.
All right, then we have a motion to place bills, plans, and accounts as presented. Motion made, seconded, any further discretion, all in favor say aye, and opposed, and it passes. Pretty nice.
Yeah, they're pretty high. You got the outside pocket.
Everything's too high now.
Part of the pants, pocket, pockets all of them.
At that point, I'd go really, they got a lot of pockets.
Thanks for the overalls, before I got to the power, pants, and then I went to those fire, I always flip them, really trade them, they're good pants.
Sure, when you retire, you'll have a whole store full of them, you need them, when we're working out them.
I've been buying them for you, so. I've been working on all the projects I put off.
She's buying you pants.
Overalls.
I see them like the overalls, because the little dash thing go click, 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 in the dryer.
Yeah, but Jill was supposed to, her Nemo wonder watches them.
All right, item number thirteen is discussed, considered presentation on the use of ARPA funds for premium pay for county employees by Jill Finney from Langford Community Management Services. Jill, come on down. And then William Thomas wants to address this issue as well. Bill, do you want to talk to us before we get started, or at the end, or?
I want to hear what she has to say.
Don't worry, I'm not completely ignorant about what y'all are doing.
Okay, okay. Well, Jill has been working with us for some time and with all the other entities in the county that have gotten ARPA funds and has an application process to go through for that, so. Jill, take your word.
So, Oliver, Ben, you doing something?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to clear something up. We had a little argument the other day. Have you ever been here in Commissioner's Court and talked to us for a commission before?
No, sir.
I didn't think so. Thank you.
For one.
Right.
Maybe Judy was here, but it wasn't me.
Yeah, we, we talked, did you come here for the GLO MIT?
No.
No, Judy came here, Jill.
Yes. I came to the one meeting that didn't happen, the watershed, holding the fire.
Oh. All right.
So y'all wanted to just kind of have an understanding of what you can and cannot do as far as premium pay goes, is that correct?
Yes, for the county employees.
Okay, so I put together a little four bound, um, labor statistical, occupational complaint page. It was forty-three thousand eighty, under fifty percent is sixty-four thousand six twenty. Third one is, if you want to pay premium pay to county employees and they don't qualify within either of these, you can do a written justification as to why you want to pay them the premium pay. So there's three different options of how you can qualify for the pay. Does that make sense?
So you're, so you're saying that on overtime, they've got to be eligible for overtime to do that?
Yes.
So that leaves out part-time? So part-time will not get paid premium pay?
Well, no, it's a or. So it's either number one or number two. So if they, or if they make less than sixty-four thousand six twenty, a part-time they qualify.
See, now we.
Wait, wait. Hourly rate, but cannot exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Be an hourly person, a part-time person with salary, um, um, and give them so many hours that they.
Cannot, just told us that rich kids.
County?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, he had bad information last time.
He's good.
He told, he was telling people, and I think it was one or two, and that was not true. It's, you can do number two.
What are you, the treasury?
Final, yeah. It's, it's salary. You're giving them, at least way, to me, is just a lump sum.
I think it's fair, I think so too, right?
Oh, yeah, it's much easier that way. It's for payroll it is, and for the employees too. I think they'd rather have one check than have it spread out.
What exactly is a pandemic, uh, date range? What do they apply sorry to ARPA? They, they're using March of twenty twenty-one, March fourth of twenty twenty-one. And forward, forward through, um, has to be encumbered by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four and extended by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six.
So what I've given you in this is I had to look back and, you know, we talked about, uh, full-time two thousand dollars and part-time one thousand dollars, but then I thought unless we do our look back period way back, part-time, some of the part-time would be making more than thirteen dollars an hour, which we have to avoid. So what I did in the part-time was the previous two payrolls, calculating it based on their hours of previous two payrolls. Um, but you can do, like, you can say after March thirtieth and figure their total hours and make sure we're not paying them over the twelve fifty or thirteen dollars an hour, the maximum thirteen. But it just worked for me to calculate.
But thirteen dollars an hour is over what you already, like, you can't.
Right, right. But on part-time, if you use their average hours for the last two payrolls, if you pay them a thousand dollars and you can see some of them will get paid less than thirteen dollars an hour and some will get paid more, or less than a thousand and some will get paid more. And there are two employees highlighted in orange, March thirtieth. Uh, we've had record turnover the last year plus. Um, so there may be more employees by the time we actually play, pay that won't be qualified for ARPA pay this round.
I noticed you had seventeen marked as grand total elected slash appointed official. Who are those?
The ones in the kind of turquoise, and they're not included, right?
They are not included, yes. And the light blue is part-time.
The hospital. Sorry, what?
I haven't done this.
Are you saying just wondering what you give them?
Yeah, we get something like that, sort of, exactly how much percent is going to make it?
Yes, I can do a committed and paid, so you can see what's been committed and what's been paid.
Okay. All right. You may not know it. I know that you don't know it. So back in the day, we had a commissioner who had dementia, okay? Well, nobody wanted to step up to the plate, so I stepped up to the plate. Loretta taught me how to do POs and requisitions. So I did that. I trained a new commissioner, because it's not like they have a training class, say, oh, come on, be the commissioner. We want to train you how to do POs and requisitions, okay? So I stepped up to the plate. Doesn't mean that I kept the county running. Don't get me wrong. I'm, I'm, I'm just saying. So then we got Biden was elected. So all the idiots who elected Biden, they know they're riding with Biden, so where am I? I'm, I'm on the other side of the county and I'm trying to drive back and forth to work. My wife can't work. And I'm doing it on a budget. I didn't get a raise. We, county hadn't had a raise in three years. So, I mean, I was forced basically to retire from the county because Ronnie and, and, uh, Robert, they, they didn't need help. They were, they were full of help. I, I could have went and asked them and, and worked a little closer to home. I live in Rising Star, okay? So when it got right down to everything and everything was said and done, the judge had to come over. He had another commissioner basically step down. He said, Bill, I need you to keep doing the paperwork. James, you're going to do, uh, you're the lead driver, you're going to be the supervisor, you're going to be acting commissioner, basically. He didn't, you know. So James ran it. I was doing the paperwork. I was not eligible for that pay.
So you were forced to retire due to the inflation?
And economy, basically, yes. It's not, and, and, and you can ask James, or there's not a commissioner here that I didn't call. These two right down here at the end of the table, they answered every question I ever had. Loretta, she answered every question I ever had. Christina answered every question I ever had. So I was here a lot. See, they were shaking James down, telling me to pass on through. They were making him empty his pockets. But anyway, I mean, so why wouldn't I be eligible for the essential work? And when, when we got COVID, our whole crew got COVID. The only one that didn't was Doug. That's the only person that didn't get COVID and we all got COVID. We were down. So, I mean, I worked through it, part of it, and I stepped.
People that are still employed, when we cut it between the two November payrolls, get it. So even if they were here October first, if they leave November fifth, they don't get longevity pay. And I think the, the ARPA COVID pay, I mean, there, there have to be parameters set.
I understand that. I, I'm not, I, there's no doubt about that. But, I mean, I worked through it. I was here. I did the job. I did more than what I actually had to do. I mean, my job was actually just to go out and drop a big drop out of Class ACs. If anybody has the ability right there, any of their drivers, because of the, the economy. I mean, it's just outrageous. Food is twice as much. Fuel is a hundred percent higher than what it was. Um, so what's happening is I'm getting shut out for what I did on, so.
From your perspective, you quit working for me. I just had somebody quit working for me, and I have no intention of paying them anything back, even though they worked through the COVID too, but they, they quit working. They quit. That's a decision by the employee, not the employer. So just keep that in mind. I think we're going to do what we can, but we do have to comply with the federal rules for the money gets funded by, and we've got to comply with the state laws on how we distribute that money. I mean, basically that's it, right, Jill?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And there's no way, Mr. Bill, while Mr. Bill's here, you cannot go back by the laws. That's what he's wanting to know. Can't pay them.
Not as a county employee, no.
Yeah, that's what he's wanting to know.
Just to know if you're no longer a county employee.
And that's all. You got to go by the law. That's what it is.
So this list you have here is just boys.
From there, new, they won't get it because they're new, newer.
That's been two weeks, correct?
Well.
Saying yours, two of these are some new hires. They're not going to get it.
Wanted to do three thousand. You're looking at, and I know you get notice last week that the next round of funding is coming. So, and then when we receive the next round, look at it again.
Jill, do you know anything about what we're, what we're calling ARPA two, the second payment tranche they're calling it? Is that for sure coming? Because we just, we got notices from the last week that that's coming, that the second payment is coming?
I've heard nothing otherwise. And I, I can't say for sure, but I.
More, more than one stood up there last week and said you will get.
Part of the problem is with inflation is because all this money got pumped in to the United States economy. So that made inflation rates now over eight percent for this first part of the year. So if they pump in ARPA two, inflation is going to get even worse. Bill's going to start paying now a whole lot more money for gas and food, like everybody else is.
Well, but then the indication, um, the cities and counties that chose not to accept the money, which many did not, um, that money was just reallocated in the last month. I mean, some cities and counties got like six hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, but they put that money back out there. So they could have kept it.
They didn't keep it to use. They just sent it back to the federal government, back, they told us, so that wasn't going to be a possibility. The rules are so flexible on this thing. It said, the money's coming, that fight's already fought, it's coming to you, and it's just going to show up in your county bank. And here's the date it's supposed to be there, well, then that date.
Next month and then.
When?
They said there was four. They told us.
It's print, it shows all the people out, right?
And the law says, Miss Loretta, the, the, say, y'all said two people are just hired, that's the law where they can't get paid, is that correct? I guess that's why.
Well, Commissioner's Court is going to have to give me a look back period to make sure we don't exceed the thirteen, the thirteen dollar maximum. So this was looking back to March thirtieth. So, yes, those two employees were not employed on.
Bill, that's, you can't, he's not in the time.
She's not eligible, is she? She began at twenty?
No, she's part-time.
Okay.
So I just, the light blue is part-time.
Okay, but I don't see any funding in her column.
On the far right.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, the second column is the number of hours worked, and the third column is calculated at.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Twelve fifty or thirteen, uh, twelve fifty an hour, yeah. It's very confusing. And we have some full-time employees that have not worked full pay periods. So I'm going to have to adjust their two thousand to make sure they don't go over the maximum also.
If we use these figures on the last page of this, estimated, a little over two hundred thirty thousand dollars. That's what we'd have to encumber.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Redd, do you have a, the number figured out? If we did it just like this, what we would have with, out of that first number seven?
I do not have, well, I, we need to bring the numbers back on the computer system. And until last week, we did not know for sure we were getting the second payment from ARPA.
ARPA two is not for sure.
But is, what I'm asking now, is there enough money in there after we allocated all this? I, we're just trying to figure out, is there enough money to do this?
To do this?
Yeah.
Oh, I think if you didn't do this right now, because employees have already heard they're getting ARPA money, I, I, again.
But what I'm saying is, is there enough money in there? We don't know. Is there enough money even there to do this? Because we've already allocated.
At this time, yes, there is.
Or Brad's from the money we have now, or?
From the money we have now.
Brad's been working on this and kind of roughly putting some numbers together about it, if you want to, Brad, send us your best opinion.
Gentlemen and ladies, uh, I would tell you unofficially, last week, because there was a little bit of concern from several different sources about whether the second ARPA fund was actually, kind of, we at all understand the economy and the way it is, that, that you can see the federal government, we've talked about the federal government gives and they take away. And we have a legitimate concern, in fact, because of the Tyler project, who we're looking real closely at. If those funds didn't, uh, I don't remember exactly what the calculations were, but y'all have made basically some commitments, uh, pledging these funds to various different entities and commitments, or line of general commitments. There's still in excess of four hundred thousand dollars that has not been committed. Now, I will tell you this, this is unofficial, but you will recall that the Eastern County Water Supply District originally asked for a half a million dollars. Uh, I had a long, long conversation, uh, with Steve Ger, Steve Gertis last week, uh, because of the concerns with funding the, uh, technology program. And Steve indicated to me that, uh, they have submitted another grant application, I believe through USDA, the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant, and they're not going to most probably need that allocation.
Not maybe.
Not all of it. Uh, what he asked, he asked basically was for us to consider three hundred as opposed to five hundred thousand dollars. And it might be possible that they only need two or two fifty. So I think we got an additional two hundred thousand dollars from last year's ARPA funds that y'all have already tentatively dedicated that are not, not going to be needed in this cycle. So that, I need to answer your question. Yes, I think those funds are definitely going to be available based on what I see in my sheet. And, uh, we all breathe, breathe a sigh, deep sigh of relief when we got the notification last week officially that they would be allocated a second kind of funding, so.
That is the news there. I know we all jumped out there, you know, want to help everybody and boy, I mean, nearly getting bear trapped and hurt. And that's what I was worried about. That's why I kept asking what you stole.
Well, and the county still will have to go through that application process, just like anybody else for the, for the computer, the technology, for, for premium pay for everything.
And Brad, something, and we'll, we'll, something we meant, we, I'm not sure if you were in this conversation, but we also have to pay Langford Community Management Services there.
Absolutely.
For the administration.
As, as you recall in my email, I said Judy, Judy was doing this way too cheap.
So we still have to pay that too.
The, the, we intend, Judge and Loretta and I talked about having. The, the, we intend, Judge and Loretta and I have talked about having this on, uh, the May ninth agenda. Our contracts, we've received all the proposed contracts and all that kind of thing. We need to get into, when you get Judge Fields or the parts, uh, authorized to execute the, um.
Case management system.
System of the state, yeah. With the, with the state contract, which is not a, a, an obligation, but it just gets our foot in the door in the program. Then our contracts with Tyler have to be approved, and I think we'll be ready by the ninth to look at those contracts and get. I frankly feel like the numbers that Loretta and I presented to y'all, uh, former meeting, are going to be real close after, after going, going through and again with, with you, I think we're going to be real close to the numbers that we presented to you originally. Thank goodness we're not going to have to propose an, an alternative plan, uh, just like, like.
Well, by the time we get deep in the budget process, if you have the second payment in from ARPA, so we'll know for sure if that's going to work or not. The budget process is not that far away. I know we're all looking forward to it, but it's not that far off. I'll let you the last one.
Susan make it.
They're tired of me saying that stuff about the last one, the last one. I'm trying to, trying to back out on that, although it is. Take them off some Christmas.
Yeah. I, I knew you, Christmas was just a metaphor, Judge, and you're saying that.
It's been one and six days, Blue County.
He's out with his men. Do you have it on your phone?
So my next question is, is Susan make the application?
Um, if Commissioner's Court will give me guidelines, and what, with the two thousand and one thousand approximate for part-time, what would work for us is to have, uh, employee March thirtieth, look back payrolls, March thirtieth through April twenty-sixth, which is this payroll. Um, and then pay May twentieth or June third, I don't know how long the whole process would take. Um, then after this payroll, I will get with Jill, and I will have real numbers to give her, um, and we'll start that application process. Judge Fields will have to sign off, so.
The application?
Yes, so y'all will give him permission also to do that.
Tell her how you want the motion, no, like.
Just like that, Kathy.
Could you repeat, please?
Okay, so it would be, oh, and something else we haven't addressed, if you look at some pay rates, there are employees that exceed that hundred and fifty percent, which is sixty-four thousand, six hundred twenty dollars that we have not discussed yet. And that is something that we, as the grant managers, can put together, um, some verbiage when reporting to the Treasury on the allowance of it. We can put together some verbiage and have y'all look at it, um, as to, uh, the written justification.
So it can be allowed, it's just, we've got to document it in the right manner.
Yep. We have to report it, and we have to put it in there.
The Treasury's rules.
Correct.
Have the Treasury's rules actually been formally, formally accepted? I mean, there, these are the rules you're going to operate with now?
Yes, sir. The all current employees, and that would be as of the date of payment, employed March thirtieth.
Of twenty-two.
Of two thousand twenty-two. With a look-back period. March thirtieth through April twenty-sixth, so two payrolls.
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two. And let's just say pay by June third. If application is reviewed and approved.
Is reviewed and approved?
Yes, uh, Langford duty management will review it and Commissioner's Court will approve it.
And that's at the rate of two thousand dollars to full-time employee?
Well, let's not, um, because, yes, but it's going to be based on those that can't meet their eighty-hour work period or pay period, we're going to have to adjust those some. So you want to say maximum two thousand dollars for full-time employee?
Okay, and you want to do part-time?
Up to, yes, up to. And then you want to do part-time based on hours worked at twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour?
Put it all into one motion.
And who are you making application to?
Jill Finney, P H I N E Y, Jill, LCMS.
It sounds appropriate.
Yes.
Whenever you're ready, Kathy, if you would read that back to us, we have on record.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rayes, um, to make application with Langford, and I'll fill in the appropriate words, communication, whatever. Um, for full-time employees, max up to two thousand dollars, and then part-time will be based on hours worked at twelve fifty per hour. All current employees employed three thirty of twenty twenty-two, with a look-back period of three thirty twenty twenty-two through four twenty-six twenty twenty-two, paid by June the third, twenty twenty-two, if application is reviewed and approved.
All right, we've got a motion before, in a second, before discussion. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye as well.
One more question, that they were talking to us about last week, was like buy board and stuff. They said that buy board was being able to be used because they competibly did, but there were several of the workers that did not competibly did, and were not allowed, you could not use to purchase the equipment. And they also said there was an appendix to Part two hundred, that there's an affidavit or something that buy board even has to sign off on, saying about the competibilities and personnel was going to put that on.
Okay, and so regarding that, as far as, you need to follow your county's purchasing procedures. And it has to be two CFR two hundred.
Right.
So it depends on how much you're spending. So if it's fifty thousand, a hundred, there's, there's a difference, um, procurement.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, so if it's under fifty thousand, um, you actually don't, you should have a couple bits, but you don't have to go out
Right.
Like the buy board. If it's under a hundred and twenty-five thousand, or more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand, you have to put it out professionally. So it all depends on whatever your procurement policy is for the county. So it's all different. So what was it, Benton County, you may have a different one than y'all have, and?
Yeah, they're, they're considerably larger than us, but they were talking particularly about buy boarding, that there's an appendix in there on the, on the two, Part two hundred that has different requirements that they had to have a, another little, he says, a one-page deal that they signed off on, that buy board was familiar with, but it made everything right.
And they may have more money, you know, I mean.
Oh, they got more money.
Yeah, then, so they're in a different volume than we are, right, almost, but yes. And that's part of our job at LCMS, to make sure that you follow everything according with you.
Because they were, in, in talking, in listening to everything that was going on, there was even one candidate there that used a different competitor, other than y'all, that was not allowing them to even use any of the quality agreement, uh, purchasing stuff at all. That they make, they were making them get everything.
Again, it all depends on.
Yeah.
How much they were spending and what they were spending on. We'll keep you in line.
Are there any questions? Can you, uh, can you spend this money or?
So the, the loss of revenue that I was referencing earlier means that you can use up to ten million of these funds if you have that much, you know, but on general services that the county might otherwise, you could consider it county money. So whatever you would spend it on for the county, that money can be used for that. It could be used for roads, it could be used for maintenance, it could be used for. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Estalators.
That little bucket thing that goes up and down the stairs?
Yeah.
She has it.
Oh, oh, no, you're talking about upstairs.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? I think we've covered everything on the.
I would like to say thank you on behalf of my employees for your job stepping up and doing this.
We are trying. It's pretty scary not thinking that ARPA two might actually be paid. That was a pretty strong rumor we were getting. We might want to get a trailer call, too, to talk to him about what his presentation is.
And what happened earlier before, um, the final rule is he gave a, he said something about this, as far as the, um, the wages and not being able to, about a hundred fifty percent, and I called it, and I talked to their lawyer, and she called back and said, you I have it on record, so I, I, I'm not sure.
Trainers are retired county judges, you know, they need lots of help, getting all the facts and numbers together to make it work.
Well, he did tell us he, he was not a Republican, a primary player. He, he said, I'm not actually willing to use money that way, it's not what it was for, he don't, he didn't pay it there.
He said, spend it on everything else except that.
Yeah.
That, that's an opinion, not a presentation.
Yeah. We get a lot of those.
I bet.
All right, anything else, gentlemen, ladies? All right, with that, then, can we have a motion adjourned?
You, sir.
All right, I will see. Would you like to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. And the opposed, same side.
Thank you.
Jill, thanks for being here. I always thought you'd been here before, but it must have been for some other.